To get your treatment, a lot of times if you don't have something like this, you're having to disrobe and you're having to change into a hospital gown or something that's not comfortable or that makes you feel uncomfortable.
There's over 6.5 million adults over the age of 65 that actually are not either not driving anymore because they're disabled or having trouble driving or just not feeling confident on the road anymore. And we started this class. It's about all of the safety technologies in your car that can help you feel safer on the road and help you feel more confident while you're driving. So it's things like blind spot warning, things like forward collision warning, backup camera, smart lights, things like that.
What I was most impressed upon is the intergenerational, the fact that young people are developing programs and technology for mixed generations and are realizing the need, and I'm sure it's partially seeing themselves in the future as well as seeing their families.
All of these and many more just led to an older adult feeling more independent, more comfortable, and more dignified.
It's a program that helps at-risk kids not only find mentorship but also get a chance to learn life skills by getting into the ring and boxing.
I'm Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, and it really gives me great pleasure to have you all join us today at what is really a momentous celebration here in Pacoima, in the heart of Pacoima, to open up our Pacoima Youth Source Center. Let's give it up, guys. Are we all excited?
So the Jeopardy! program was designed for children and youth who are at risk, but it's also for all the youth in the community. We take kids from ages 10 to 17, and they come after school and they box, they do homework, and they kind of hang out together Monday through Thursday.
I think it's a great start. It reminds me, you know, when I met my trainer. My trainer was key. He was instrumental in my life. He taught me how to, you know, prepare for fight, not just for fights, but for any challenges. He taught me to set goals and to prepare to accomplish these goals.
I was with the wrong friends who I was going towards the wrong way I shouldn't be. And I started Jeopardy! very young, and so I feel like they definitely sent me straight.
When I see our kids from our community that are demonstrating that level of potential, I know that we haven't lost. We are gaining ground, and it makes me very proud that we are able to provide places like this in the city of Los Angeles for our kids to be successful.
A big surprise for kids at Cleveland High School in Reseda. They won a live performance by singer-songwriter Billie Eilish as part of a voting drive contest. The singer certainly has our vote.
Hey, I'm Billie Eilish.
And I'm Eric Garcetti. The city of LA is making it possible for every LAUSD high school to organize voter registration drives on campus. Every participating LAUSD high school will have the opportunity to win a live performance from Billie.
Congratulations, Cleveland. I know you have something that no other school in America has today because of your hard work. You've got Billie Eilish coming to your school. And you, of all the schools everywhere in this country and this district, were number one. And you today get Billie Eilish.
Yo, you know what's crazy? This is the first time I've ever been inside a high school in my life. Ever. Ever.
Hi, my name is Billie.
I was just a kid who had a lot of time to focus on things that I wanted to focus on, which was kind of part of the homeschooling.
The currency of the family is music. We just let our life be driven by what Billie was interested in.
Before I go on, I just want to say, your voices really do matter, and it's really important that you all know that. And sort of take advantage of that and understand that like you actually trying to be a good person is not pointless.
The school won a citywide challenge for registering the most students to vote. The North Hollywood community came out in full force recently to brave the shave and make a bold statement in support of some very brave kids.
We're here again, right here in North Hollywood for the St. Baldry's fundraiser that LAFD and LAPD put on every single year right here at this station. And it's a terrific opportunity to bring the community together in supporting research and prevention of childhood cancers.
Whenever we can step forward and take a lead role as a Los Angeles Fire Department, we want to do that to further the cause and the ability to raise funds for this very, very important cause.
We actually started doing this in 2003, and my child at that time was a four-year-old who was going through cancer treatment. And I found out that the fire station here was doing a St. Baldry's event, and I asked him if I could join him. And that started a partnership that we've been doing ever since.
I think the chief did a great job. I haven't seen it yet, but it feels good. And it's a little cooler, but I can certainly feel those sun, those sun rays coming on me too now.
It was better cutting than it was being cut, but I want to throw a shout out to Lieutenant Greg Doyle. His leadership in putting the Bald, the Baldry's event together each year is, just speaks to his character, his perseverance and support of such a worthy cause.
Some teens in South LA may not have the privileges of more affluent kids, but who says they can't be a prince or princess for a day? At A Place Called Home, they get to be just that, as it prepares them for their prom night. Anna Marcos takes a look.
Trinise Manet is about to go to her first prom night ever at Hamilton High School in South LA. And thanks to the Cinderella and Prince Charming project, she will enjoy it in style. She will get a new or almost new prom gown. And there's a bit of fling that goes with it, too. Makeup, check. Nail polish, check. And just like in the storybook Cinderella, shoes are also part of the magic spell.
I'm at school like from like 8 to 4:30, and you know, it's really hard for my parents to kind of scrounge up money for me to get stuff. So I really much appreciate, you know, them doing this for the community.
The project is the brainchild of a place called Home, a group that works with youth in South LA to solve issues around health, education, the arts, poverty, and homelessness.
We're really just trying to label the playing field so that they can also participate in their, in their senior combinations.
Kind of makes you feel like a princess. And I even have an accessory. Hundreds of girls are getting this experience for the first time and maybe for the only time in their lives.
I think it definitely boosts this up morale and their enthusiasm, their ego. I think that it does really bring out a lot of positivity in them, and it makes them feel good.
Several different high schools are taking part this time on this, the 17th year of the event. And the boys won't be left out of all the fancy stuff either. They will get prom suits and shoes. Meanwhile, Trinise seems to have found her magic gown.
I'm looking forward to the pictures and just like, you know, making memories with my friends.
Happy memories that hopefully live long past the night of the ball and the stroke of midnight.
For more information on the many programs at A Place Called Home, visit apch.org. Folks in CD9 get help with their project ideas, a new way to report traffic accidents is launched, and faith leaders get together to talk about building community. All this and City B. All hands on deck. Council District 9 is reaching out to faith-based and nonprofit organizations in hopes of generating new local housing and project starts. South LA is in need of more housing for its residents and is incentivizing organizations who choose to build in the area.
We're interested in utilizing our faith-based and nonprofit community, making sure they are aware of what the resources are, and helping them identify resources available to assist them in their projects.
The very same resources that we can make available to be a renter, we should be make available to someone to actually become a permanent stakeholder in the community as a homeowner.
Property damage hit-and-run accidents are not only problematic for victims, but for police as well, who spend valuable time taking field reports after they occur. In response, the LAPD has introduced a new online hit-and-run reporting system. In about 15 minutes, users can file a report and generate a PDF copy as needed. For more info, visit lapdonline.org. And City Hall hosted the annual Day of Religious Pluralism, a discussion highlighting the increasing role of faith leaders in building and strengthening alliances in order to stem the tide of hate before it begins.
How much better it is for us to come together as a community and prevent victimization in the first place because we've changed cultural norms.
Family and community members in Council District 1 also came out for a free picnic, complete with games and treats, courtesy of Councilmember Gil Sadio.
We call it la tardeada en el parque, the tardeada in the park. So it's basically spending the afternoon with the families of Pico Union here at Pico Union Best Park. Pico Union, and especially this part of Pico Union, is a very low-income community where there is not a lot of green space. So this is a, an opportunity for the families to bring the families, to bring their kids to the park. We have games, we have like a music, we have like a clown show, and we have food, and it's just to activate the park here. This is the first annual, and we are hoping that we're gonna do it every single year.
Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez got parents and kids hooked on fishing as they spent the day catching catfish at Hanson Dam.
Fishing has been a very special part of my family history. Growing up as a kid with my grandfather and my father, we used to go fishing, and it was just some of the most beautiful memories that I had growing up as a kid. And so I want to be able to introduce that to more kids in the northeast San Fernando Valley.
It's very important for the kids to be in touch with nature and for us as well. I love fishing. It's a fun, family time.
It's really fun.
I waited for a tug on the rod, and then I started turning it until I got one.
It's a, it's a really great opportunity to teach the kids some new skills, patience, and what it takes to be a good fisherperson.
We Angelinos in this community is something we are very blessed to have, close to our homes.
There's just nothing more beautiful and serene than being out at a lake.
Nice catfish, nice fatty.
Oh, shoot. Shoot, shoot.
Connect with city, state, and nonprofits to receive free services. Come out and support the LAPD Museum at a carnival in Eagle Rock, and enjoy the West Valley on two wheels with Councilmember Bob Blumenfield. On this and things to do. Join Councilmember Paul Coretts as he sponsors Westwood Connect Day. Connect Day tasks community partners and dedicated volunteers with bringing services like legal assistance, medical services, housing resources, and showers to those experiencing homelessness. So show up and help out at Westwood Connect Day, Wednesday, April 24th, beginning at 10 a.m. at the Westwood Recreation Center. The center is located at 1350 South Sepulveda Boulevard. To volunteer, call Jessica at 213-300-8233. Councilmember Gil Sadio and the Northeast Area LAPD Museum are hosting an Easter carnival. Come enjoy your Easter weekend while supporting LAPD community youth programs. There'll be loads of food and rides for kids, big and small. So be sure to check out the LAPD Museum's Easter carnival happening April 19 through the 21st at Glosell Park in Eagle Rock. The park is located at 3,000 North Eagle Rock Boulevard. You can get more details about this neighborhood carnival on Eventbrite. Cycle up for the sixth annual Blumenfield Bike Ride. Join Councilmember Bob for a 10-mile community bike ride at a family-friendly pace. Riders will be escorted by LAPD officers, and one lucky rider will win a brand-new Thrive Bike up for raffle. Get on the move with the West Valley at the Sixth Annual Blumenfield Bike Ride, Sunday, April 28th, starting at 9 a.m. The ride begins at the Reseda District Office located at 19040 Van Owen Street. For more info, visit blumenfield.lacity.org/ride2019. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Good morning, good morning. Everybody would please, shh, shh. Everybody, please take a seat or try to find a seat. Want to welcome you to City Hall, this Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we've got a roll, we've got a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Blumenfield Bonin, Buscain O'Seadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Kerkorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Rue seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves, and Ms. Rodriguez seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we, let's be led today by Mr. Bonin. Could you lead us in our pledge? All rise for our flag salute.
Certainly could, Mr. President. Thank you. If everybody could please join me in facing the flag, putting their hands over their heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonin. Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't we run through the agenda at this time?
Mr. President, items 1 through 14 are items noticed for public hearing. There are cards on all items.
Then let's continue to the next section.
Items 15 through 21 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Certainly, Mr. President. Items 15 through 21 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, so let's prepare to vote on those items.
Excuse me, I believe there are some requests.
Okay, Ms. Martinez?
Yeah, can you hold item 18 for me, please?
Let's hold 18. Mr. Smith, 19.
Number 20 for Mr. Kerkorian, please.
20 for Mr. Kerkorian. Streff, what were you? All right, so let's hold those items. We'll vote on the remaining items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, let us continue.
And, Mr. President, the orders for items 15 and 16 and 17 will be held over unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll get to that number. So move on to the next section of items.
Items 22 through 35 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on items 22, 23, 27, 29. And that completes all the cards.
Let's hold those items and vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, that then takes us to item 36, which is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
I'll just look to the city attorney for now. Okay, so we'll hold that. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, that then takes Council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment.
Okay, thank you. In fact, why don't I call up Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn has items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 13, 14, 23, 27, 29, and your general public comment. And then Sean, you're, you're the last multi-speaker, so I want to make that announcement. Yes, Mr. Previn?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. I'm speaking on behalf of myself this morning, unfortunately, because when I try to speak on behalf of my neighborhood council, I am blocked.
So let's move on to the items. Send it for me, Mr. Previn.
Well, I just let the record reflect that. That's how I feel about it.
It's the last one. You want to speak on the items?
I got it. I got it. Thank you. Appreciate that. The lighting districts look terrific. It's, it's exceptionally good for Mr. O'Farrell. He's got several opt-ins today. He's got several opt-ins today, more than almost any other district today. But going to the public interest and necessity in rolling out more and more liquor licenses. I just want to say, sir, that I think that you're focusing on the vibrancy component, which is that it's nice to have people reveling around and consuming alcohol. But I was so mortified when I heard that a guy on a scooter was mowed down but backwards by somebody who may have been inebriated. You know, and it made me realize, you know, we have to do stuff to protect. Now, it's true that you have to put a little asterisk next to that because it was 3:40 in the morning, and I don't recommend riding a scooter at 3:40 in the morning because you could get hurt. But still, I feel terrible about these kinds of situations. And I've taken notice that personally, in my area, which is the Valley, and I think Krikorian would concur, and Martinez, we see people being mowed down every single day. So it's very upsetting. And ninety percent or higher, if some kind of substance abuse is involved, or alcohol, or something like that. So I don't know. I just wish that we had a, you know, it's like if you have a leader who's at the helm and he's drunk, or he's just like, he sees a rule, but he just breaks the rule. Or he can't control himself because he just wants to get the matching fund program out the door so he can get right back to business on item seventeen, despite not hearing from Studio City Neighborhood Council on their effort to vote, to put it on their agenda, to discuss it, and bring a plan forward that you have, you know, consistently and 100% ignored.
Let's move back.
Let's go to the general public comment and wrap this up. I want to thank Mike Fure for being as diligent as really he could possibly be at resisting improving the open government platform here at City Hall. There's Andrew West, who deserves a lot of the credit. Today, there were no agendas in the hall. You know, I have to ask myself, please put out a stack, and then they do. It's just, it's not acceptable because people do care about the business before the city. And with Mike Fure, you know, he was accepting referral fees, not him personally, but one of his top lieutenants. And what really upsets me is that the Ethics Commission, who just celebrated quietly and walked right out, you know, they're behaving according to the city attorney's rulings. When we say, whoa, whoa, that's completely inappropriate for Greg Smith to start a lawsuit that will result in waste management, et cetera, you know, they say, well, looks good to us. You go, excuse me? And then Mike Fure gets hammered in the media for having lawyers who are taking money from various parties. It's completely unthinkable, sir. And I just, I don't know what to say because we keep bringing it up and you keep, once again, driving forward as if there's no obstacles, no red light, no yellow light, no caution, and there it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, Sean Murphy? Sean, items one, two, three, four, five, all the way through fourteen. And then your general public comment.
Yeah, item three, I'm supporting. Item five, I'm supporting. General public comment?
Give him his one minute.
I'm tired of UO management raising my fucking rent every year. Something needs to be done. People are getting priced out on their neighborhoods. We can't even stay in our neighborhoods. I'd like to tell UO management to stop raising my fucking rent!
Thank you. All right, so that, Mr. City Attorney and Madam Clerk, that concludes the multi-comment section. So with that, why don't we go into a presentation with Ms. Martinez? The floor is yours.
Okay, good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I'm really proud to stand here for my fifth year recognizing what has become an international movement, which is Denim Day. Denim Day grew out of a court ruling in Italy where the Italian Supreme Court overturned a man's rape conviction because the justices ruled it was impossible to take off tight jeans without the victim's help, and therefore, the incident must have been consensual. The next day, the women in the Italian parliament came to work wearing jeans in solidarity with the victim. Peaceoverviolence developed Denim Day campaign in response to this case and the activism surrounding it. This was twenty years ago. It pains me that we are here now in 2019, and year after year, we still have to remind the public that sexual assault and sexual violence is a huge issue in our country. But I do, but I do think we're making strides in calling attention to it. What was once something we kept quiet and whispered about behind closed doors is now something that we are, as a society, becoming more comfortable speaking out against. For too long, our society has normalized a rape culture. But over the last year and a half, people are finally talking about it, and we see a spotlight being shined on powerful men every single time we turn on the news there is someone else that's being denounced for sexual harassment. Men who have had been in positions of power and authority and manipulated women and young girls and sexually harassed and assaulted them. From music to movies, our kids have been growing up thinking that certain behavior is okay. Thinking about the media that I had been accustomed to as a young kid in the eighties and nineties were full of really bad behavior. We had R. Kelly and countless other musicians who, no doubt, had an influence on an entire generation of teenage men into thinking that women were only sexual objects. The music talked about it. Women who dressed a certain way must have been promiscuous. And sometimes, the only value that a woman really had, according to these lyrics, were her physical assets. And no one ever questioned these lyrics. Over the past few months, as TV specials have come out on TV about R. Kelly and Michael Jackson, one thing that has struck me as a consistent theme among people is that they don't believe that these stories are true because these men and their, these men and their music gave them some sort of good memories attached to their music when they were kids. Memories of their childhood and their past, and therefore, these stories could not possibly be true. After surviving R. Kelly's docu-series, there was an actual spike in his music sales and his streams. And yet, many people still don't think that listening to his music equals to supporting him. This is what we need to talk about. This is a conversation that we all need to have. Why are we okay with hearing these stories about women and girls and not doing anything about it? I don't want to believe that the stories about black women and girls who have been abused, matter less, in society than the stories of white women and girls. This has to change. It goes beyond teaching our children between right and wrong. It's about teaching one another to believe survivors. Being advocates of ending sexual violence and sexual predators and making sure that as a collective society, we are talking about it and making sure we stand up against it. So today, I want to use this day to invite my colleagues and those in the audience and those who are listening to remember that education begins at home. Join me in teaching the next generation that we must have greater respect for one another. We must believe survivors. Call our behavior when we see it. Question people who choose to turn their cheek and support predators. Teach our boys early on about consent and challenge the men in our lives. Rape culture ends with you, it ends with me, it ends with us. I'd like to commend Peaceoverviolence for continuing to push this conversation forward. I'd like to welcome Patty Giggins, the Executive Director of Peaceoverviolence, to say a few words about the significant movement.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Norrie. It's really great to be here again. We come every year, for the past twenty years, to acknowledge that we have these issues in our society, in our city. But the city of Los Angeles was the first city to declare itself a Denim Day city. And thank you, thank you for this body, those of you in these seats today and your predecessors over twenty years have had the insight and foresight to recognize that we can create a city of Los Angeles and a culture that is free from sexual harassment, sexual abuse, sexual violence, and rape. We can only do that by consistently, just as Councilwoman Martinez says, educating, educating, educating. Challenging, challenging, challenging. There are so many myths that have been perpetuated over actually thousands of years. So the twenty years of Denim Day is up against a couple of millenniums of the lies, the false stories, the myths that have been told about women and how they deserve what they get. At the heart of our campaign is the no excuses. When you think about it, how often have we heard, "Her clothes were provocative." "Her skirt was too short." Well, in Italy, they said her jeans were too tight. And what about folks who are incarcerated? They deserve it? We don't believe, we cannot believe that rape is part of the sentence when you go to jail or to prison. It happens to all women, it happens to trans people, it happens to children, it happens to men. And so, we've been tackling this in our city for twenty years, and we can be proud of that. But we must continue, we must not falter. At this point, we're the longest-running sexual violence prevention education campaign ever.
Let's give them a round of applause on that.
At some point, maybe we'll be out of business.
That's just so deserving. And we want to put you out of business.
And I'd like to, I brought with me someone who is our, the face of our poster this year, Dana, who would like to say a few words as a survivor.
Dana, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for being here. My name is Dana Clayton, and I'm a survivor of sexual abuse. There is nothing more that I can say that my voice matters. When I say no, it matters. When you say no, it matters. It does not matter if my jeans are too tight, or my shirt, my shirt is too short, or my skirt is too short. I have ownership of my body, and everybody has ownership of their body. No one has the right to infringe on anybody's well-being, and that should be enough. Rape culture ends with me, it ends with each and every one of us. And I would like to submit for your consideration. As you walk out into your life, as you walk out into this day and into the world, ask yourself, how can I help and support? How can I encourage someone on their healing journey? Because this is not just my struggle. As I'm whole and happy, I will bring that into the world, and we need healing. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, colleagues. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this certificate to Peaceoverviolent and declare in April 24th as Denim Day and invite all of you to wear jeans to help communicate our message that there is never an excuse or an invitation to rape. Thank you very much.
Well done. Well done. So good to see you. One more round of applause, everybody. So if I could get, as they are going to the back, Mr. Rue and Mr. Bloomingfield, I believe, if you guys would go to the center aisle for your presentation?
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. I am proud to be here with Councilmember Bloomingfield, Commissioner Cecilia Cabeo, Bureau of Street Services General Manager Adele Hageh-Haleil. Right, Adele? Okay, I'm getting closer, all right. City Plants Operation Manager Elizabeth Hariggi, our Urban Forestry Department Director Tim Tyson, and of course, Leafy, to celebrate Arbor Day in Los Angeles. Our city trees do so much for our health, for our happiness, and for our communities. We all know that healthy trees clean our air, cool our city, and are one of the best natural tools for fighting climate change. But trees have a profound effect on our mental health as well. Studies have shown that being amongst trees reduces stress and can even reduce feelings of isolation. In my district, from Los Feliz to Hancock Park, I have seen how protecting and preserving iconic trees brings communities together. Los Angeles is blessed to have one of the largest and most diverse urban canopies in the world. From the black walnut to the jacaranda, our city trees define our neighborhoods and add to our quality of life. However, our trees face more threats today than ever before, from drought, disease, and invasive species. But perhaps, the biggest threat facing our city's urban canopy is a lack of funding and focus on preserving it. We may have one of the largest urban canopies, but we are one of the only cities that does not have a tree inventory or a robust plan for long-term care and protection. Fortunately, behind me are some of the folks who are committed to preserving and protecting our urban forest. It's been fantastic working with Adele, Tim, and their entire team that find better ways to replace dying trees and preserving the healthy ones. To partner with the Board of Public Works, Kevin James, Cecilia, on creative sidewalk designs that take into consideration mature trees. To work with City Plants, who just this weekend joined my office in Los Feliz for a massive free tree giveaway. And to work with Councilmember Bloomingfield on supporting our urban forestry department and developing better plans for the future of our trees. It is a pleasure to live in a city with so much incredible nature and to work with these individuals behind me to help it grow. I'd like to now invite Councilmember Bloomingfield, the Chair of Public Works Committee, to also say a few words.
Thank you very much. Councilman Rue, you said it well. This is an important day, and it is Arbor Day. So happy Arbor Day, everybody. Now, this day has a very rich history in the United States. Anybody want to guess as to when it got started or who started it? All right, I hear those guesses, yes. Think about, I'll give you a hint. Think Mount Rushmore, second face on the right, Teddy Roosevelt. Hundred twenty-two years ago, in 1907, he proclaimed Arbor Day across the nation. And in his proclamation, he wrote that the goal was to, quote, "Give a day or part of a day to special exercises and perhaps to actual tree planting in recognition of the importance of trees to us as a nation and what they yield in endowment, comfort, and useful products to the communities in which you live." Now, I would also add to that and update it a little bit and talk about carbon sequestration, air quality, transpiration or the cooling effect, and generally, the quality of life. And I'm proud to stand here with Councilmember Rue and our General Manager and Commissioner and others to continue this shared goal in Los Angeles with all that we're doing to help boost public works. Streets LA and the urban forestry. We've got, we've done countless community plantings in this last year that I've led in the Valley and we've done throughout the city. President Roosevelt continued, he said, quote, "A people without children would face a hopeless future. A country without trees is almost as hopeless. Forests which are used so that they cannot renew themselves will soon vanish and with them, all the benefits." He was the Lorax before the Lorax was real. Now, it was not that long, too long ago during the Great Recession that our leaders were forced to make some very difficult funding decisions in this city, and the urban canopy fell to the bottom of the priorities list. And over the last decade, it's been operating at the worst, about twenty percent of what they were in 2008. Since I became Chair of Public Works, we've made a big stride in that. And about a year and a half ago, we made significant strides to reverse that. And I'm proud that we, as a council, have significantly increased the urban forestry's division budget because a strong urban tree canopy is so much more than beautification. And my hope is we're going to take it and surpass where we were in the recession in this coming year. Just a few weeks ago, I met with dozens of new tree surgeons who are now... Just a few weeks ago, I met with dozens of new tree surgeons who are now in our communities and were hired with the millions of dollars that we all secured for urban foresteries last year. Now, trees cost the city millions of dollars through infrastructure damage and lawsuits, but they also save the city in terms of health and quality of life. And together with our, our General Manager, the Bureau of Street Services Leadership Team, we have been working to bring these services into the 21st century, not just more money, but smarter, better, faster. Thank you, Councilmember Rue, Adel, Commissioner Cabeo, for your shared commitment to the health of our urban tree canopy.
Thank you, council members. Trees are critical to the identity of Los Angeles, providing the framework and backdrop to some of our, of some of our most beloved and iconic neighborhoods and parks. Beyond aesthetics, street trees provide multiple environmental, social, and health benefits, which is why we're so grateful for council's leadership on this issue. Council is led in by investing in our urban forest and spearheading tree-friendly citywide policies such as the two-to-one replacement for every tree that's removed as part of the sidewalk repair program. But trees aren't just a climate change issue, trees are an equity issue. Strategic investments we make today in trees will provide much-needed canopy in undershaded and underserved neighborhoods in our city. Moving forward, we'll undertake a comprehensive inventory of the city's 750,000 street trees to help target where those tree resources are most needed. And Streets LA is hosting a Tree Summit this month, bringing together some of the best tree and climate experts in the region to strategize about the best ways to maintain and enhance LA's urban forest. Completing this work will take a village, which is why Streets LA, Streets LA, sorry, is filling 55 new positions for the Urban Forestry Division. And the Board of Public Works is actively recruiting the city's first-ever City Forest Officer to ensure our focus on the entire urban canopy is a citywide coordinated effort. Together, we're going to make 2019 the Year of the Tree in the City of Angels. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, I'd like to introduce the General Manager of Street Services, who I just want to comment. When he first became General Manager, he set such a high bar for himself and the department that I was very concerned. But not only has he met many of these goals, but he's on his way to exceeding all expectations. So I'm so glad to introduce the new, the General Manager for Street Services, Adel Hagek-Halil.
Hashkalil.
Hashkalil.
I have few more years left in the city, so my name eventually will, will be right. Good morning, Mr. President, honorable council members. Thank you, Councilman Rue and Councilman Bloomingfield, for championing Streets LA and, and really being the champions of trees and investing in our infrastructure. So thank you for your leadership. On behalf of the men and women of Streets LA and our city partners, thank you for celebrating Arbor Day and also being recognized as Tree City USA for 29 years. Arbor Day is a reminder and a call to action on all of us to protect, preserve, and plant trees to enhance our urban forest while increasing our tree canopy. Los Angeles, like many other cities across the country and the world, are facing a changing climate with extreme heat, drought, flooding. In LA, by 2060, days with temperatures exceeding 95 degrees will double, if not triple, making it unsafe, especially for the most vulnerable, our children, our elderly, and the homeless. With your leadership and the leadership of the mayor and the Board of Public Works and the innovation of the various city and community partners, we're responding to this challenge to make our communities safer, resilient, and sustainable. Trees are an essential part of climate action plan and our plan to get this done. Trees are an integral part of our street network and our urban forest. Trees provide shading, making our streets and sidewalks safe and mobile. Trees capture and clean water, mitigating flooding, and improving water quality. Also, as we walk or bike, trees clean the air that we breathe. Trees enhance the quality of life in our communities and make our communities safe, resilient, and sustainable. But more needs to be done. We need to develop a comprehensive and strategic urban forest management plan based on innovation, integration, and inclusion. We need to find innovative solutions to renew our infrastructure while protecting, preserving, and planting more trees. We need to integrate our activities together to support our tree planting efforts such as stormwater capture. We need to engage our community and businesses, business partners to invest more in our trees. I'm glad to report to you today that we are on our way. Next week, we'll have our first LA Tree Summit in Los Angeles with experts from across the world coming here with our community partners to really work together on the prioritization of our actions. We are trimming, preserving, and planting more trees. So far this year, with our partners, City Plants, Water &amp; Power, Reckon Parks, and others, 1,850 trees have been planted, 20,000 trees have been trimmed, and more to be done remaining of this year. I'm excited about the future of our urban forest because when we all come together and partner towards a common goal, it's amazing to me what's possible and what's doable. And I'm, I call on everyone, on everyone, young and old, to join with us, join hands as we grow our, and preserve our urban forest and protect our trees. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Adel. Finally, I'm proud to bring up the Operations Manager of an organization that has worked with my office to plant trees from Sherman Oaks to Los Feliz, and that's Elizabeth Harigi of City Plants. Elizabeth?
Good morning. Thank you very much. Good morning, Council President and Council members. Thank you, special thanks to Councilmember Rue and Councilmember Bloomingfield and Commissioner Cabeo and the General Manager, Hashkalil. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Like you said, my name's Elizabeth Harigi and I'm the Operations Manager for City Plants for five years now. And it's an honor to stand here before you today alongside our partners. On behalf of City Plants, the City of LA's Tree Planting Organization, my colleagues Elizabeth Skurzat and Rachel Leary are not able to be here with us today, but they're here with us in spirit. City Plants Program Assistant Jimmy and our brand-new mascot, Leafy, is here today. Yeah.
Hey, Leafy.
We're proud to say that on Arbor Day 2019, with the help of our partnering city agencies, Streets LA, the Department of Recreation and Parks, LA Environment and Sanitation, City Planning, and Empower LA, City Plants alongside six nonprofit tree planting organizations, and over 600 volunteers, celebrated the planting of our 100,000th tree in Councilwoman Nury Martinez's district. Today, we celebrate trees as a precious and vital impact they have in our communities. Today, I'd like to formally introduce to the council, to Leafy La Ojita, the City of LA's Tree Planting Mascot and the Lorax of the City of Angels. Leafy was born out of a need to educate and inform Angelenos of the value of LA's tree canopy. At City Plants, our mission is to create greener future for Los Angeles by engaging Angelenos to plan and care for trees throughout the city. We envision a Los Angeles in which people and every neighborhood have equal access to trees and their benefits. Clean air, energy efficiency, better health, cooling shade, and a friendlier, more vibrant community. With the looming effects of climate change in our city and as a recent report, first steps towards an urban forest management plan, as it concluded, now it's the time for trees. And Leafy is here to be the collective tree champion for our city. We are united in trees and united in LA's sustainable and resilient future. We look forward to celebrating Arbor Day and LA's tree canopy for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rue, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Smith at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Rue and Mr. Bloomingfield. Thank you so much for this opportunity. In, in late 2007 and '08, what most people don't realize is this city was technically on the verge of bankruptcy. I mean, we were then two days of defaulting on our bonds and not paying our bills. We were laying off thousands of employees. It was the worst place in the world to work, believe me. One of the things we found, and Mr. Corrigan had just come in the council, Mr. Caretz had joined the council, Mr. Bonner was the Chief of Staff to one of our council members, as we sat here and talked about these issues and how are we going to save the city from ultimate bankruptcy, everything was on the table. But one department that took the greatest brunt of the entire attack of the recession was Public Works. And when we lost our, we literally lost our street tree division entirely. It just virtually didn't exist. And it was such a tragedy because we talk also about things like broken windows and preserving communities. One of the first things you see when you drive down the street is a canopy. Then you begin to look at the houses and the streets and the cars and things like that. And if you want to preserve a community, the street trees are so important. Fortunately, now we look at it from another point, from the environmental point, that climate change is a critical issue to all of us and preserving that canopy is critical to this future of the city, not just as a city, but the residents who live in it. So I am honored to be able, be able to come back and vote to fix those problems. And I thank you, particularly Adel, your department, Mr. Rue and Mr. Bloomingfield, for bringing this back up and realizing we must recreate the street tree division and get it whole where it once was and make it better, as you said. So thank you for that and I'm just honored to be able to vote on it again to fix that. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Smith. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. And with that, myself and Councilmember Bloomingfield, on behalf of the City Council, would like to present this resolution celebrating Arbor Day 2019.
Get Leafy in the photo, man. Leafy needs to be. Hold on to Leafy. Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't we look at voting on items one through six? Items one through six. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now, let's move on and do items eight through 14. Eight through 14. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, and now, Madam Clerk, let's vote on reconsideration of items 15, 16, and 17. So this first vote is on reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now, this actually vote on items 15, 16, and 17. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, let's now move to item 19. On item 19. Item 19. Let's open, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
All right, so that is approved. All right, so that now brings us to... Okay, Mr. Caretz, let's deal with your item, which is item 27. I, I think the, the appropriate way is to, if you wanted to give an opening statement, then I'll go into 20 minutes or so of public comment and then we'll vote on the issue. So the floor is yours, Mr. Caretz.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. There's so many reasons to oppose SB 50 that it's almost difficult to know where to start. First, I should point out, this is not an affordable housing bill. In fact, it's quite the opposite. It's really just a handout for developers. It takes away all of our power over zoning. It's based on trickle-down economics and housing. For those of you who don't remember trickle-down economics, which was originally articulated during the Reagan administration, the idea was that if you gave huge tax breaks to the ultra-rich, eventually it would trickle down to the rest of us. And of course, that didn't work and Donald Trump is trying the exact same thing and is having the exact same result. Well, this is trickle-down in housing. If you build incredibly dense housing in places where it doesn't belong, and this would allow 85-foot, five-story buildings in the middle of single-family neighborhoods with a goal of destroying those neighborhoods, as the author, Mr. Weiner, has articulated, where he said, "I believe single-family housing is immoral," and, and tree-lined neighborhoods and backyards, as he's described it. This also would destroy HPOZs. It would not take HPOZs into account, so we've spent years and years and years historically preserving neighborhoods and we will then be demoing the homes in these HPOZs and putting up five-story buildings. There's no sign that building luxury housing, even in large numbers, will reduce the rents. In fact, studies have shown that in all likelihood, the opposite is true. And I'm certainly seeing it anecdotally in my neighborhood, where we build new luxury housing and the rents in surrounding apartment buildings also go up because those are the comps, as a Realtor will tell you. So it's actually, if anything, likely to increase the cost of housing. Some new studies are showing what I've, I've said for the last 10 years. If you build a lot of luxury housing, all it will do is allow more companies to say, "Well, we have the room now in LA," and move the jobs and move their people and just become a larger and larger city and not make it any easier for the young people that are supporting this because they think it'll reduce their rents and give them an opportunity. I believe it'll do exactly the opposite. And in Los Angeles, we already have densified, we already have TOCs. I believe we have around 100,000 units that have been approved and not built already. So there doesn't seem to be that much of a point. And where we've done something that most cities haven't done, this legislation doesn't acknowledge that. So, I, I mean, I, again, I almost don't know where to start, there are so many arguments, but I believe Seattle did a substantial amount of luxury development in one year. I think they had a year, and they're a much smaller city than us, where they built 24,000 units. And if in theory, this would dramatically drop rents, then it would have dropped their rents. 24,000 units, I don't know what the equivalent would be here to build 100,000 units in, in a year. Their rent did go down by $2. So all that building, it had no impact whatsoever and I'd be surprised if the $2 sustains itself and doesn't wind up actually going up as a result. This will set a floor at luxury prices rather than a ceiling. It doesn't do anything for our real problem, which is affordable housing. Even San Francisco, his home area, where I thought he would get the support, the San Francisco Board of Supervisors voted 9 to 2 to oppose this bill. So if he can't even get any support in his home city, why does he think this would work here? And why would we support it? I don't think there is a reason. I ask you to support this resolution in opposition to SB 50.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Caretz, for bringing this forward. Colleagues, last year when we saw Senate Bill 827, we unanimously opposed it because it was an attempt to remove the democratic process from planning. It was a one-size-fits-all approach to a complex and important issue. In its second iteration, SB 50 has taken some of our concerns into account, such as adding renter protections that I should, that I believe should be adopted in our local housing rules, but it is still lacking in many ways. SB 50 does not differentiate between cities that are building their fair share of housing production versus those... production versus those that are not. It is also unclear how SB fifty would affect our existing housing incentive programs here in Los Angeles. Critically, this extremely vague definition of job-rich areas in SB fifty does not account for industries moving, changing, or declining. It does not address the need for workforce or moderate-income housing, while at the same time, could further concentrate wealth in already advantaged communities. The state has a major role to play in increasing housing stock in California. It is by setting housing targets for municipalities and enforcing against those who fail to meet them. It is not the state's role to take away the voice of the people to plan their own communities. I firmly believe that we need to build more affordable and workforce housing, but we need more tools to do this, not less, like voter-approved Measure JJJ, which was far more democratic than SB fifty. We have not seen the last of SB fifty or bills like it, until we and city government work hand-in-hand with our communities to build local solutions for local housing needs. There are already bills currently pending in the Capitol that reflect how the state can help, not hurt our efforts to meet housing goals, and that is such as SB four. Today, I submit a motion to study this bill, which would only take effect if a city is not meeting its housing targets, an approach that I think merits discussion. The city of Los Angeles faces a housing shortage, but while we are building our way out of this crisis and meeting our annual housing goals, many cities are not. Because of this lopsided development, more burden is placed on cities like Los Angeles. This is not fair, and I believe Senate Bill four starts a discussion of equity and density across our state, and I think that's a discussion worth having, while SB fifty is a knee-jerk, blunt instrument that doesn't understand the nature of our housing crisis or how to fix it. What we need is more, and in some cases, denser housing in Los Angeles, but we also need housing that serves the communities we represent. That's why I've been working with the Planning Department on incentivizing workforce and moderate-income housing that would finally bring housing for the working and middle-class in Los Angeles, that in a rush to build market-rate housing have far been ignored. We have taken great steps as a city to build more housing in Los Angeles, but we need to do more. We need to do more to address the root cause of the homeless crisis. We need to do more if we were to stop the power grabs from Sacramento. There's no doubt that we need clearer zoning laws in Los Angeles and an updated plan for our neighborhoods, but I will always believe that it is neighborhoods and people who should lead the process, not legislators three-hundred-and-fifty miles away. I cannot support SB fifty, and I encourage an "I" vote today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Bonnet. Let's keep it down. Let's keep it down so we can get to the vote. Yes, Mr. Bonnet?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to rise, I want to support Mr. Coretts's legislation, but I want to frame the conversation a little bit differently. This is, I think this calls on us to have a couple moments of candor that sort of get lost in the debate about state control or local control. And I'm certainly in favor, I think as all of us are, of local control. That's where the control should be, at the neighborhoods and at the council level. But I think we need to be candid and we need to be clear that there's not enough housing in Los Angeles. There's particularly not enough affordable or workforce housing in Los Angeles. I don't know how many times I talk to college graduates who say they can't afford to stay here when they get out of LMU or UCLA or Mount St. Mary's. I don't know how many times I talk to parents who say, "You know, my kids aren't going to be able to live here. I don't know what we're going to do." That conversation happens all the time. And the state is taking these actions repeatedly, coming at local control and trying to chip it away, because they believe we don't do a good enough job. And in that, they are right. We need to do a better job. The problem is, to my mind, is we're, in the housing we're producing, we're not producing enough affordable housing. We're not doing enough to require affordable housing. We're not doing enough to require workforce housing, and we're not doing enough to protect what is there already. And there are many things about this bill that concern me. I'm concerned that it doesn't do enough to stop displacement, and I'm concerned that it doesn't do enough to require affordable housing. I agree with the analysis that says that this bill gives away way too much in exchange for way too little. It needs to address... Thank you. If we are going to be doing more to require and incentivize housing, it has to do a hell of a lot more, a hell of a lot more, to get us a lot more affordable housing and have real significant protections in there to protect the loss of what exists now. Now, there's some definitions in the bill of sensitive communities, where there's supposed to be higher protections. That's a start of a conversation, it's nowhere near the end of a conversation. I'm particularly concerned, as I was just telling Mr. Sadio, that sensitive communities doesn't take into account any of my district, and I have, you know, everybody perceives the West Side as being very wealthy. I have had, over the past decade, you know, the forces of displacement and gentrification ravage Venice, and there's very little we've been able to do about it. This would make that worse. I've got a neighborhood del re, mainly low-income, mainly Latino communities, that would be ravaged by this. There's not enough protection in there. And I'm going to assume the best intentions of everybody involved, those who support and those who oppose, but my instinct and my allegiance is to stick with the concerns of the fifty concerned organizations, anywhere from Public Council to Inner City Struggle to LA Forward, to Little Tokyo Service Center, Move LA, Public Interest Law Group, the Green Lining Institute, Trust South LA, I'm just picking a bunch at random here that have serious concerns about this bill. And until there are affordable housing protections built in and that there is real, genuine affordable housing, I don't think this bill should go forward, even if it was not a question of state versus local control. The intention behind, the stated intention behind this bill does not yet match the particulars of this bill, so I do think we need to continue to oppose it. We have two items on the agenda today about this. One is this item, and the other is an item to actually look more seriously at some of the impacts, and I think that will help us address to the state legislature what some of the real concerns are and give them some guidance about what they can do to actually help us solve this problem as opposed to make the problem worse. Thank you.
So, Mr. Coretts, what I'm going to do, I'm going to open public comment, and what I would like to, it's hard to tell who is supportive and who is opposed. So, do we have people that are here that are supportive of SB fifty that would like to speak? Then let's, why don't I get about ten of you? Okay, just, guys, everybody's going to get a chance to speak, trust me. Okay, sir, identify yourself. Can I get a translator, please?
Muy buenos dias. Consejo lo apoyo a la ciudad, condado y estado.
Councilmembers, I support you, I support the state and the county.
Para que esa ley, SB cincuenta, la haga. Y apoyo a cada concejal, dándole a cada uno que están allí las gracias.
So, we should follow SB fifty.
Porque las propiedades, muchas propiedades viejas son palos inflados que no vale la pena y quieren ponerlas cientos de dólares. Una propiedad no vale más que cincuenta, setenta mil dólares, sesenta mil dólares. Deben de tumbar la edificios.
We're talking about...
Y casas viejas, hospitales, para que haya mucho trabajo.
We are talking about different buildings, housing, that it's really old, that I think that it should be...
Al mismo tiempo, reducir las rentas, reducir la comida, reducir muchas cosas.
We should also have housing that is affordable and food that is, people can buy.
Como un árbol, que todos somos juntos. Vamos a trabajar, no?
We should work together, strong.
Dios está con ustedes.
God is with us.
Thank you.
Gracias a todos ustedes. Vamos a tumbar casas viejas.
Thank you. Thank you, next speaker. Next speaker. Please identify yourself. Yes?
Good morning. My name is Armando Flores with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. We're here today to urge you to support Senate Bill fifty. This bill demonstrates a commitment and willingness to solve California's housing crisis. This bill lays out a vision for transit-oriented communities throughout the state of California, where Californians can afford to live near their job and get there easily using public transportation. This bill comes at a time when cities, like Los Angeles, are failing to meet their housing needs. The lack of housing supply has resulted in skyrocketing rents and has pushed working and middle-class families to live in one city and work in another. Families have even chosen to leave their city altogether, impacting businesses as they are unable to retain talent. SB fifty is a bill that will transform housing in California, and it will preserve local control. We urge you to support SB fifty. Thank you.
Thank you. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Leonora Kamner. I'm Managing Director of Abundant Housing LA, and we're a growing movement of people in Los Angeles that are dedicated to changing the culture here to recognize that we need more housing. We have a climate crisis, we have a housing crisis, we need action now. It's too late to put this off, it's too late to wait, and so we need SB fifty now. I think that it's important to recognize that the majority of Angelenos support SB fifty and that so many of them can't be here today.
Now, just, just...
They, so many of them can't be here today because, you know, they are struggling to afford rent, they have to work jobs, and they can't be here like on a Tuesday afternoon to come show their support. So please remember those people, and also I think that, you know, we should listen to the concerns that there should be more affordable housing, and I think that there should be more work on that front, but SB fifty is an important first step.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. My name is Zenonai Crow, and I'm a sophomore at Palisades Charter High School, and I'm here to advocate for horrible housing. So, in California, we have a crisis with housing. You guys are all very much aware of this. And soon, I'm going to be going to college alongside much of my peers, and we want to stay in California. We love this state, we really value the higher education system, and we want to live here. But the problem is, a lot of my peers cannot afford the housing prices in order to attend these schools, to go to higher education institutions. For example, UCLA, it's surrounded by single-family homes, and if a lot of students want to attend there, they can't, they simply cannot afford the prices, and that's just because there aren't enough units. And you actually can see examples of places that have increased the amount of units, market rate and affordable, and you can see places like Sydney where they increased the number of units exponentially, and rental prices in communities where they did this reduced the amount of rents by twenty-five percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Richard Bourne. I live in Koreatown. I think we've heard about local control and LA, SB fifty will affect LA, it will affect the bad actor cities around LA that are using local control to keep their, themselves wealthy and free of minorities, more so than it will LA. We see Burbank, Santa Monica, Redondo Beach, Manhattan Beach, they've all said, "We want more jobs, more jobs, more jobs, no more housing." And so when I came to LA with my family, I found a job in El Segundo, my wife found a job in Santa Monica, we could not afford to live in those places, so we came to Koreatown. SB fifty will force these bad actor cities to, around transit, allow housing to be built, which will relieve the pressures of gentrification that are changing my neighborhood away from how we like our neighborhood. So please, do not oppose SB fifty.
Thank you. Next, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Ryan Tanaka.
Now, let's get no one else in line, I'm not just, I'm going to take the last person in this line, and that's, and I'm going to go to those, the other group. Yes?
Okay. Hi, I'm Ryan Tanaka, I'm the Project Manager for Abundant Housing LA, but I also used to work for the Mayor's Office of Housing up in the San Francisco area. And I worked in Affordable Housing Department, and we would get, open up fifty units, and we'll get five thousand applicants, and we have to turn down all those thousands of people. And the main reason is because we don't have enough housing. And what a lot of people don't know is that market-rate housing does fund affordable housing. We take part of their profits into funding these initiatives, so we need to build both. And I'm also a musician, and up in the Bay Area, I moved away from there because I got tired of seeing my friends being priced out. And, you know, I've lost a lot, and I don't want, LA is not as bad as San Francisco. I do think they're doing things wrong up there, and we have a chance to do it right here, so please, support SB fifty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. Shane Phillips with Central City Association. We're here to support SB fifty and ask council to do the same. LA has made great strides with its TOC program, and SB fifty builds on that success by applying very similar incentives to many of the higher-income, more exclusionary neighborhoods that should have never been exempt from TOC in the first place, and to the many cities around our state that have no such program. The bill also provides far stronger tenant protections than TOC prohibiting its incentives from being used anywhere a tenant has lived in the past seven years. Despite what others are telling you, this is a bill that is first and foremost about affordability and sustainability, and that's why it's supported by organizations like NRDC, AARP, labor, nonprofit housing organizations, and Habitat for Humanity, among many others. The biggest city in California seeking a wholesale exemption from this law undermines the entire purpose of a statewide solution and will no doubt be used as fodder by cities that have no interest in fixing the housing crisis. Please help us hold all cities accountable for helping fix this crisis and support SB fifty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Eli Khan, and I urge the council to support SB fifty. If California is to meet our carbon emissions reductions goals, we need dense development, we need transit-oriented development, we need to move away from a culture of sprawling single-family homes, ranging into the urban wildland interface where there's a fire risk. We need, we need fewer people driving, we need more transit, we need denser development. SB fifty would help attain that goal, and I urge the council to support it. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Joshua Blumenkopf. I moved to California six years ago, and I moved into an apartment, which I liked, and then around me were built all these new, quote, "luxury apartments," which I couldn't afford, but what that meant was that my apartment stayed affordable year after year. So I support building new denser developments around so that people can stay in their existing, in their existing apartments. Supply and demand applies to housing. We need more supply of housing, and we don't need neighborhood councils restricting development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, identify yourself.
Olivia Lee with the LA Area Chamber of Commerce. We're here in opposition of the resolution and in support of SB fifty by the Senator. Since last year, the Senator has made changes to grow the support from last year's bill, and this bill has garnered diverse support throughout the state. Time and time again, we remind this council we need more housing, and this bill is a step in the right direction to build more housing to address our supply and affordability problems here in Los Angeles. We urge you to vote against this resolution. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name is Vincent Jones with California YMB. As we know, the housing crisis is very challenging, and it requires a lot of conversation, and Senator Warner's office in California YMB has been having lots of discussions with the Mayor's Office, with a number of city councils' offices, and with a number of LA-based equity organizations. So today, we're not asking you to support SB fifty, we're asking you to support ongoing negotiations with LA-based organizations, with the city council, and the mayor to be able to make this bill even better. As you all know, no bill begins perfect. It's through the sausage-making process that it becomes a more, a more, a bill that reflects more of our values and our needs. And we know that Los Angeles is the largest city in the state, and you have, your leadership is largely what has inspired many aspects of the bill, and we want to make sure that that leadership is amplified and is be able to be supported throughout this bill. So please, vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, oh, is that it? Okay, last speaker on this item.
Good morning, City Hall criminals!
Good morning, City Hall criminals. So, go ahead. Yes, sir. So, Mr. Goat here, representing the Trades Council of America. Yes. Get those bulldozers out and bulldoze all those old homes, especially near Loyola Law School down there and UCLA Law School. Because we need to build stack and pack. Lots and lots of stack and pack. Pack those little kids in those little goddamn boxes next to their little choo-choo trains. And then one day, Eric Garcetti will turn off the electricity and all of you will play the new Hunger Games 2020. So, we support the real edition of the Hunger Games. We support bulldozers. We support chaos. And we support SB 50. Because everything that this new governor does, we support it. Fuck you. Support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now, please, let me get Mickey Jackson, Brad Kane. Is it Rachel Rose Lucky? Come forward.
Healthy Housing. Good morning. Do you know, the thing about single-family housing or duplex or something is that's how the working class gets a stake in the American dream. And when I, Mr. Weiner has called, has called, uh, single-family homes immoral. He has also called them sinful. Now, how a building can be immoral or sinful is beyond me. It can be ugly. It can be badly built. But, so, I think this is a bit wacky. The whole thing's a bit wacky. It isn't on a solid basis. Where, I, I'm a working-class person. The way my family got a little bit of a stake was they bought a single-family home inexpensively. And there's a lot of reasons to oppose this. And I have no time to address them all. But I do want to say that I think there's something strange about a very well-to-do person, kind of like trying to undermine or eliminate...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Howard. Okay, just get, Brad, before you start, sergeants, could you, somebody help Mr. Herman find his seat?
Oh.
He is not supposed, his name was not called. Mr. Kane, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. My name is Brad Kane. I'm President of the Pico Neighborhood Council and President of the South Carthay Neighborhood Association. I want to thank Council President Herb Wesson and Council Member Paul Coretts as neighborhood heroes in moving items 27 and 21 forward. There are no studies supporting the bold and false promises of SB 50. We all want affordable housing, but we need protections for the existing tenants and communities. Nothing that is in SB 50 applies to LA. We are building several hundred new units within blocks of my home in the Pico Neighborhood Council. Neighborhood councils are working to make the system work. If the billionaire developers profiting from SB 50 care to come and testify instead of sending shills and hired support from Abundant Housing L.A., let's have a real dialogue. I think what we need to do is build on what the city of LA is already doing and vote no on SB 50.
Thank you. So, is this Rachel Rose Lucky? And I'm looking for Charles Tate, Walter Dominguez. Is it a Ken Kinsler? Please come forward, get in line. Jill Stewart? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Rachel Rose Lucky, representing the Rampart Village Neighborhood Council. I am their secretary. Last year, the Rampart Village Neighborhood Council stood with the LA City Council in rejecting SB 827. SB 50 is a worse bill than that one was. The question before you today is simply a matter of if we control our own sovereignty in planning and land use decisions or abdicate to Sacramento. I am here today to let this body know that the Rampart Village Neighborhood Council stands in support of Councilman Coretts's motion and to retain our right of self-determination. Democracy works, democracy works from the bottom up, not from the top down. Thank you.
Yes. Identify yourself, sir. Identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Charles Tate. I was born and raised in San Fernando. And I just want to say, my dad was able to build a house on a one-income, single-family income and raise his children and stuff. Now, I become homeless myself due to my death of my father and not having any, you know, money coming in because I was a caregiver for him. And I think to see the amount of people that are now on the streets has risen tremendously in the San Fernando Valley. And I am one of them now also. And I would like to just say that SB 50 seems to be half loaf. It doesn't seem to go far enough to address the problem. And I ask you to please oppose it. Thank you.
Yes. Identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Jed Kinsler. I'm Communications Director for AIDS Healthcare. I just wanted to point out a concrete example of one of the unintended consequences of SB 50. This was from this past Sunday, Saturday's LA Times. It's a Schindler-designed home where Susan Orlean, the author, now lives in the Coangga Pass. Under SB 50, this home, this architecturally significant home, which is actually Los Angeles Historic Cultural Monument 860, that means nothing unless this home is on a state register. This home can be torn down. It can have, be replaced with a 75-story, a 75-foot-tall building. The same thing is true of the Stahl House in West Hollywood, probably the most iconic case study houses. I've gone through 19 of 20 case study houses here in Southern California would be eligible if they are not on the California list, the California Historic Register. And the only people permitted to put a home on the California Historic Register are the owners of those homes. So, if you wanted to do...
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself, please.
Walter Dominguez, South Carthay Neighborhood Association. Muchisimas gracias, los señores Corets, Bonin y Rio para su liderazgo. I'm here to just say that, of course, I oppose SB 50 for all the reasons that have been stated. It is an abominable bill, incredibly in democratic, and it will destroy our historic zones, of which I was part of a committee of people who worked three years to create the second historic zone in the city, the South Carthay. And we followed that by planting over 1,000 trees. So, that ties into the green canopy concept, too. So, community building would be destroyed by SB 50. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Yes. Ms. Stewart.
Jill Stewart, Executive Director of Coalition of President of LA. We're here to support Paul Coretts and to oppose SB 50. It's actually far worse than Senate Bill 827. It's much, much worse. It wipes out single-family homes to build luxury towers with very few affordable units. Any residential street near a busy bus stop or rail stop would be overrun by towers in Los Angeles. It actually wipes out low-rise neighborhoods that are nowhere near transit that are called "jobs-rich" by Scott Weiner. It encourages these tall towers with no parking at all in areas without transit. Not only is that destructive, it makes no sense whatsoever. It forces our sensitive communities to upzone themselves out of existence by 2025. This is packaged as a protection. It's not. It's a direct attack on Los Angeles' sensitive communities, forces them to rewrite their community plans by 2025. We're talking about areas like Boyle Heights, Pacoima, Crenshaw, Wilmington, all forced out of existence. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as the, oh, I'm trying to get a few more speakers. So, before the next person comes, can I get Renee Moya, Dale Kendall, Nina Royal, Ruth Scribner? Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Hello. Yes, my name is Tommy Butts. And good morning, councilmen. Thank you for your time. I'm here because I am directly, people in my community are directly impacted by SB, SB 50. And I'm here to oppose it. Okay. Many people in my community are homeless. They don't have a place to stay. I'm on a fixed income. And I'm also a minority, which we are greatly affected by this. I'm seeing the people in my community not having, struggling to find food, places to stay. That's, that's general living situation. And no person should be living like this. The first line of constitution is, "We, the people." We, the people, should have a place to stay. We, the police, should have housing. And we, the people, don't need another luxury apartment building with 30% occupancy while people are starving and don't have a place to stay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, folks. My name is Renee Moya. I'm with Housing as a Human Right. I'm also a volunteer organizer with the LA Tenants Union. I'm here to strongly support Council Member Coretts's motion to oppose SB 50. SB 50 is for more, is a more expansive version of last year's failed SB 827. It will spur further gentrification in our cities by incentivizing the wrong kind of development, especially in communities that are vulnerable to further displacement pressures. Our opposition falls into two different categories. On the one hand, we believe that the affordability requirements are insufficient, woefully so, with proposed affordability numbers are too low, given the dearth of truly affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles and an oversupply of luxury housing. We also would note that the numbers for ELI, for Extremely Low Income Housing, are essentially missing. We think that this is a way also for developers to continue to buy their way out of onsite affordability requirements, which is something that we strongly oppose. I would also say that we have a concern around sensitive communities. We think that the bill basically says that gentrification is inevitable and we don't agree.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello.
Erica, Erica, one minute.
Hello. My name is Dale Kendall. I'm here representing Save Beverly Fairfax. We're here in support of Councilman Coretts. And we are opposed to SB 50. Do we actually think that developers are going to build affordable housing in these areas? They're going to build and they're going to charge as much as they can. They are just in it to make as much money as that they can. And I am asking you to please oppose SB 50. Thank you.
Next. Yes.
My name is Ruth Scribner. And Los Angeles is a city of interconnected neighborhoods. And as Councilmember Bonin stated last year, Los Angeles is not a flat, sterile map and that planning is not theoretical. There is a human ecology here that needs to be considered as we build upon what is already here. This can only be done on a local level with a local understanding of the land use dynamics that are currently in play. Everyone wants affordable housing. And SB 50, with all its destructive power, is not the answer. We can do better than this. I urge you to support Councilmember Coretts's resolution and oppose SB 50. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Royal.
Good morning. I'm a member of the Sunland Tahanga Neighborhood Council Land Use Committee. And in March, the Board of the Sunland Tahanga Neighborhood Council submitted a council file. And it says that the Sunland Tahanga Neighborhood Council has taken a position to oppose SB 50 and urge the city council to introduce a resolution to, in council forthwith, opposing SB 50, but in support of Paul Coretts's motion. We feel the state should not be, should not take away local control of land use. Land use should be left to local governments. And personally, I wore black today because I think it'll be a black day if the city council does not pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, I think we heard enough speakers on both sides. Mr. Coretts, if you're comfortable, I want to call for a vote on this item. So, with that said, Mr. Clerk, why don't you open the roll?
Mr. President?
Yes.
This item requires two votes. A substitute motion has been posted and distributed. And the first vote would be whether to substitute.
Okay. Let's vote on the substitution. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Now, let's vote on the act, the actual issue itself. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes. All right. Okay, guys. Thank you. We've got a lot of work still to go.
Okay, now, let's go to item 18.
And, Mr. President, on item 18, motion 18A has been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
All right. So, on 18, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right.
And, Mr. President, that's as amended by motion 18A.
Let's take up item 20. And it's my understanding we'd vote on that as amended as well.
Yes, Mr. President. On that, amending motions 20A and 20B have been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Okay. So, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And that's as amended by motions 20A and 20B.
Now, let's move to items 22 and 29. 22 and 29, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Mr. Coretts. Mr. Coretts.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, where's the, I gotta find our hot shit. He's, Paul.
He's got one there with him.
Oh, good. Maybe he had it. Like to call item number 23. And we have speakers on this item. Ms. Maria Patio Gutierrez, Once again, we've called two speakers, Maria Patio Gutierrez and Mr. Herman. Going once. Going twice.
Are you, please speak into the mic. Some of us has disabilities and we can't hear you, sir. General public, I want you to understand that on item seven there, as I signed up on all items, as I do every fucking meeting I come to.
You're, you're off topic. Please speak to item 23.
Hearing protests regarding the proposed Third Street lighting district. Say we can shine the light on all the drug dealers who possess...
Mr. Herman.
...and require street lighting, sir. What do you mean?
Mr. Herman, we're on item 23.
Item 23, ladies and gentlemen, again. CD8, goddamn Harris, nigga Dawson. You know how we rule and roll in the city of LA. When I was here for Lipsy and we hustled you to put up a sign...
Mr. Herman, you're not on topic.
...authorizing the interim general manager to do what I say. Forty-two U.S.C., 1983...
Okay. You're, you're off topic, Mr. Herman.
...of LA!
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Your time is up.
John Publicoff?
No. Your time is up. Thank you.
Before that, Mr. Spindler, would you please go sit down?
Mr. Spindler, you're not on the speakers list on this item. You're just trying to disrupt the meeting.
Go sit down, Mr. Spindler.
Mr. Spindler, if you continue to disrupt the meeting, we'll have to ask you to leave. Is it Gutierrez?
Yes. Hi. Good morning. My name is Maria Patino Gutierrez. I'm with Sage and the Unidad Coalition. And I'm here because we have a lot of questions about this proposal for...
I'm still having, what do you call that, a treatment like this. The taxes we pay, they make your salary. The very reason why you're here is because we voted for you guys. We made it possible, we trusted you, knowing that once seated in office, we're going to have all the support and help that we need. If there's a flaw in the system, your purpose is to help us, not to hinder any opportunity that comes along my way. So, don't forget, you're a public servant. You're here to help us. And, once again, I'm asking your humble office to help us in any way that the opportunity, because it does help us in our daily lives. Thank you, and I'm hoping for all your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and if it wasn't clear to everybody, you have one minute to speak.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
My name is Jose Dueña.
Hola.
No, 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 in Spanish. Mi nombre es Jose Dueñas.
My name is Jose Dueñas.
Soy conductor de Uber Lyft.
I drive, I drive Uber and Lyft.
Y en este momento estoy trabajando para una empresa de pantallas portátiles.
And I'm also working with the technology, with the screen.
Se llama Firefly.
It's called Firefly.
Vengo aquí porque siento en la obligación y protestar por mis derechos. Esta compañía es muy buena y no la quieren quitar.
I am here because I think that I can come here to fight for my rights. They want to get rid of this company, and I'm here to tell you that this is a very good company.
La vida en Los Ángeles es muy cara.
Life is very expensive in Los Angeles.
Y esta compañía nos está ayudando a pagar los bilers.
This company is helping me to pay my bills.
Apagar la gasolina, que es cara.
I have to pay for gas, it's very expensive.
La renta.
Rents are high.
Y necesito la ayuda de.
And I need your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning to the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Dante Woods, organizer with Stand L.A., Stand Together Against Neighborhood Drilling. First, I want to thank the City Council President Herb Wesson for being our City Hall champion. I also want to thank his fellow council members and cosponsors, and the City of Los Angeles Petroleum Administrator, because I'm sure he wants us out of our hair. I'm here to appeal to this council to support the 2,500-foot Human Health and Safety Buffer Ordinance. We have been waiting for this report for over two years, and we're here to remind this body of the urgency in getting this motion passed sooner than later. In the spirit of solidarity, the impacted community residents are asking all of you to sign the pledge to support this policy here today. Finally, hear us when we say, no drilling where we're living.
No drilling where we're living.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Don Martin, Deborah Bell Holt, and Carmen Garcia.
My name is Fernando Bravo. I'm a registered nurse, kiter permanente.
Did we already call you?
Excuse me?
Did we call your name?
No.
Why don't you wait until you're called? Thank you.
My name is Donald Martin, and I'm here to support the 2,500-foot setback. With me, it's a matter of life and death, literally. You see, I live within 300 feet of a toxic waste disposal unit. As a result of the toxins that are given off by that unit, my family has suffered tremendously. I have a granddaughter who's contracted leukemia, I'm sorry, Hodgkin's lymphoma, which is a cancer of the lymph nodes. Subsequently, my wife is now contracted cancer. So, I'm going to cut my message short, because virtually, I don't know how long I have to live. And I'm asking you to take into consideration that our children are dying. There are signs out at these locations that say that the state of California knows that there are chemicals contained on those locations that cause cancer, birth defects, and other reproductive harm. So, not only are our families that are being affected now, the children now are being affected, but our unborn children are being affected as well. So, I ask that you hurry and ask that those administrators' reports be submitted as quickly as possible, and that their 2,500-foot setback be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Bell Holt, and I'm a resident of the Jefferson Park neighborhood, and in Council 10 for 18 years. I am also a Scope leader. I have been independently voicing my concerns to end the oil drilling for over 10 years, and I have been involved in getting my neighbors and my, and the residents involved in this issue. My family has personally been impacted by respiratory problems, asthma, difficulty breathing. My husband has been diagnosed with leukemia, and his family does not have a history of this. It's unfair that my family and neighbors live next to these sites because of the companies are making money, and we're spending money on doctors, visits, and medication as well. City Council, please take action to resolve these, to release the reports, because we elected you to be honest, to support us, to protect us with.
Thank you. Next four speakers are Bahram Fazeli, Jasmine Johnson, April Papili, and Iretha Wormsley. And my apologies if I mangled anybody's names.
Mr. President, honorable members of the council, good morning. My name is Bahram Fazeli. I'm Director of Research and Policy and Court Chair of the Stand L.A. Coalition. We need your leadership in making Los Angeles a safer and a healthier place to live, especially for vulnerable communities living within the impact zone of fossil fuel operations. Oil drilling operations near sensitive receptors in communities such as Wilmington and South L.A. and other neighborhoods is putting the health and safety of our children at risk every single day. We need your leadership in ensuring that the Office of Petroleum Administrator finalizes the assessment report on oil drilling ASAP, and plans need to be set in motion to draft an ordinance to create a protective health and safety buffer zone in Los Angeles. A lot of you are supportive of the Green New Deal, and the mayor is supportive of the Green New Deal, and it's hard to imagine to have a Green New Deal in Los Angeles without addressing oil drilling in L.A. We are asking here for you to please sign the pledge cards in support of this concept of creating a health and safety buffer zone, and our friends are passing around those pledge cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Iretha. I am a community leader with Scope, a Council District 8 resident, and I've lived in South L.A. for over 45 years. While I don't live near currently a oil drilling site, I've seen air pollution in my neighborhood has been impacted by my health and my family's health. I have asthma, my brother has asthma, and my husband has respiratory condition. Over the years, while living in South L.A., our conditions have gotten a little worse. Additionally, I worked over a decade near Inglewood Oil Field and have numerous friends who have passed away from cancer and also struggled with asthma. I am here today because my neighbors, my families, my friends that live near L.A. south drills, drilling sites shouldn't have to live like this. People that spend time in these communities should feel safe in their neighborhoods. They shouldn't have to feel like their health is at risk. They have the right to read the data report that you said you were going to submit. The public asked for this information, like everyone else has said, two years ago. So, why are you withholding this information from us? You said we need the health study in order to act. People, when you go to the doctor, you get your results in a few weeks. It's been two years. Please release the health study so we can move forward.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Evelyn Del Real, and I'm here with ARMS of L.A. because I believe we can all come together to keep our community safe and keep our industries and employment industries strong. Jobs created by the oil and gas industry benefit people across California and across many diverse ethnic and class backgrounds. When it comes to health concerns, I encourage you to look at other health-related impacts on residents, like those exposed to flight paths, freeways, and power lines. Please don't narrow it down on an industry that supports this economy and provides good wages for our communities, especially those in dire need of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is April Papili, and I'm here.
Thank you, and I'm hoping for all your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and if it wasn't clear to everybody, you have one minute to speak.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
My name is Jose Dueña. No, 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 in Spanish. Mi nombre es Jose Dueñas.
My name is Jose Dueñas.
Soy conductor de Uber Lyft.
I drive Uber Lyft.
Y en este momento estoy trabajando para una empresa de pantallas portátiles.
And I'm also working with the technology, with the screen.
Se llama Firefly.
It's called Firefly.
Vengo aquí porque siento en la obligación y protestar por mis derechos. Esta compañía es muy buena y no la quieren quitar.
I am here because I think that I can come here to fight for my rights. They want to get rid of this company, and I'm here to tell you this is a very good company.
La vida en Los Ángeles es muy cara.
Life is very expensive in Los Angeles.
Y esta compañía nos está ayudando a pagar los biles.
This company is helping me to pay my bills.
A pagar la gasolina, que es cara.
I have to pay for gas, it's very expensive.
La renta.
Rents are high.
Y necesito la ayuda de...
And I need your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning to the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Dante Woods, organizer with Stand L.A., Stand Together Against Neighborhood Drilling. First, I want to thank the City Council President Herb Wesson for being our City Hall champion. I also want to thank his fellow council members and cosponsors and the City of Los Angeles Petroleum Administrator, because I'm sure he wants us out of our hair. I'm here to appeal to this council to support the 2,500-foot Human Health and Safety Buffer Ordinance. We have been waiting for this report for over two years. And we're here to remind this body of the urgency in getting this motion passed sooner than later. In the spirit of solidarity, the impacted community residents are asking all of you to sign the pledge to support this policy here today. Finally, hear us when we say, "No drilling where we're living."
No drilling where we're living.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Don Martin, Deborah Bell Holt, and Carmen Garcia.
My name is Fernando Bravo. I'm a registered nurse, kiter permanente.
Did we already call you?
Excuse me?
Did we call your name?
No.
Why don't you wait until you're called? Thank you.
My name is Donald Martin, and I'm here to support the 2,500-foot setback. With me, it's a matter of life and death, literally. You see, I live within 300 feet of a toxic waste disposal unit. As a result of the toxins that are given off by that unit, my family has suffered tremendously. I have a granddaughter who's contracted leukemia, I'm sorry, Hodgkin's lymphoma, which is a cancer of the lymph nodes. Subsequently, my wife is now contracted cancer. So I'm going to cut my message short, because virtually, I don't know how long I have to live. And I'm asking you to take into consideration that our children are dying. There are signs out at these locations that say that the state of California knows that there are chemicals contained on those locations that cause cancer, birth defects, and other reproductive harm. So not only are our families that are being affected now, the children now are being affected, but our unborn children are being affected as well. So I ask that you hurry and ask that those administrators' reports be submitted as quickly as possible and that their 2,500-foot setback be implemented.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Bell Holt, and I'm a resident of the Jefferson Park neighborhood and in Council 10 for 18 years. I am also a Scope leader. I have been independently voicing my concerns to end the oil drilling for over 10 years. And I have been involved in getting my neighbors and the residents involved in this issue. My family has personally been impacted by respiratory problems, asthma, difficulty breathing. My husband has been diagnosed with leukemia, and his family does not have a history of this. It's unfair that my family and neighbors live next to these sites because of the companies are making money, and we're spending money on doctors' visits and medication as well. City Council, please take action to resolve these, to release the reports, because we elected you to be honest, to support us, to protect us with...
Thank you. Next four speakers are Bahram Fazeli, Jasmine Johnson, April Papili, and Aretha Wormsley. And my apologies if I mangled anybody's names.
Mr. President, Honorable Members of the Council, good morning. My name is Bahram Fazeli. I'm Director of Research and Policy and Co-Chair of the Stand L.A. Coalition. We need your leadership in making Los Angeles a safer and a healthier place to live, especially for vulnerable communities living within the impact zone of fossil fuel operations. Oil drilling operations near sensitive receptors in communities such as Wilmington and South L.A. and other neighborhoods is putting the health and safety of our children at risk every single day. We need your leadership in ensuring that the Office of Petroleum Administrator finalizes the assessment report on oil drilling ASAP, and plans need to be set in motion to draft an ordinance to create a protective health and safety buffer zone in Los Angeles. A lot of you are supportive of the Green New Deal, and the mayor is supportive of the Green New Deal, and it's hard to imagine to have a Green New Deal in Los Angeles without addressing oil drilling in L.A. We are asking here for you to please sign the pledge cards in support of this concept of creating a health and safety buffer zone, and our friends are passing around those pledge cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aretha. I am a community leader with Scope, a Council District 8 resident, and I've lived in South L.A. for over 45 years. While I don't live near currently an oil drilling site, I've seen air pollution in my neighborhood has been impacted by my health and my family's health. I have asthma, my brother has asthma, and my husband has respiratory condition. Over the years while living in South L.A., our conditions have gotten a little worse. Additionally, I worked over a decade near Inglewood Oil Field and have numerous friends who have passed away from cancer and also struggled with asthma. I am here today because my neighbors, my families, my friends that live near L.A.'s south drilling sites shouldn't have to live like this. People that spend time in these communities should feel safe in their neighborhoods. They shouldn't have to feel like their health is at risk. They have the right to read the data report that you said you were going to submit. The public asked for this information, like everyone else has said, two years ago. So why are you withholding this information from us? You said we need the health study in order to act. People, when you go to the doctor, you get your results in a few weeks. It's been two years. Please release the health study so we can move forward.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Evelyn Del Real, and I'm here with ARMS of L.A. because I believe we can all come together to keep our community safe and keep our industries and employment industries strong. Jobs created by the oil and gas industry benefit people across California and across many diverse ethnic and class backgrounds. When it comes to health concerns, I encourage you to look at other health-related impacts on residents, like those exposed to flight paths, freeways, and power lines. Please don't narrow it down on an industry that supports this economy and provides good wages for our communities, especially those in dire need of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is April Papili, and I'm here with ARMS of Los Angeles to support keeping oil industry jobs local. California has the strictest safety and environmental regulations in the nation when it comes to oil and gas production. By keeping the industry here locally, we are able to follow and enforce those very strict regulations. The industry is also committed to hiring locally and to hiring in the communities they operate in. I urge you to think about the men and women who are employed by the industry and the economic benefits that the industry provides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jasmine Johnson. I'm with Physicians for Social Responsibility L.A., which is the public health voice for a new economy. At PSR L.A., we're examining one of the racist legacies in South L.A., that is the overabundance of toxic industries and hazardous land uses and polluting and poisoning our families and our neighborhoods while hidden in plain sight. I live in C.D. 10, just a few blocks from the Murphy Drill Site. Oil drilling should have never been allowed in my neighborhood, yet we're still dealing with the health impacts of it every single day. I urge you to pass the 2,500 Human Health and Safety Buffer with a five-year phase-out, because as the city continues to update its neighborhood plans to uplift and prioritize the health and well-being of its residents, we need to zone out oil drilling, clean up these sites, and repurpose them for the benefit of our communities. Thank you.
Next speakers will be Carmen Garcia, once again, Georgia Bernal, Ivan Serna, Esperanza Romero, and Kalu. Any of those individuals here?
Good morning. My name is Kayla Guzman with ARMS of L.A. We work to assist at-risk youth, veterans, and homeless, and anyone in need of a second chance. The jobs created by oil and gas industry benefit people across California, across many diverse ethnic and class backgrounds, including individuals who want to have good-paying, middle-class jobs. Don't eliminate these good-paying jobs for the local residents as well as potential future workers in the industry such as members of our organization. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ivan Serna, and I live in Lincoln Heights, Council District 1. I'm a senior attending Alliance Environmental Science and Technology High School. I'm concerned about devastating, the devastating impacts of fossil fuels have in our present day and in our future. I hear stories of low-income families and their well-being and health being impacted by active oil wells here in Los Angeles. As you can see in this room, there's young people, and I care about my future. So I'm here asking you, I'm asking here, asking you, leadership, and, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. Yeah, so I'm just asking you guys to release the report and pass a 2,500 Human Health and Safety Buffer Zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Esperanza. I'm not sure if I'm next, but I heard my name called, so I'm here. I'm a resident of Wilmington. I didn't even know this was happening, but I feel so passionate about oil drilling and the refineries and how they're killing us softly that I took time off work, and I'm here. And I just want to urge you to make sure that no more, no more oil drilling happens in Wilmington. This wouldn't be happening if Wilmington was in mostly like low-income immigrant communities. This doesn't happen in wealthy communities. And this lady, you know, previous, I respect what she's saying about jobs, but you know what? Wilmington suffers from health problems because of the oil drilling. I'm all for the buffer. And Buscaino, are you here? I didn't think so. Unless it's like the 5K or like they're opening up a Dunkin' Donuts, he's there. But anytime we're calling him to speak up and stand up for us when it comes to oil refineries or the oil drilling, he's nowhere to be found. You know, so I challenge him to stand up for us. My son has asthma, he's 10, I'm done with it. So as long as these meetings keep on coming, you're going to see my face. And thank you so much for your, what you guys do, and I'm going to shut up. But you guys are in a position of power. You guys have the power.
Thank you. Georgia Bernal, still here? Not here, okay, we'll take her off the list. Beatriz Carrillo. Nalele Kobo. Reverend Oliver Bowie. And Shamari Davis. And please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Shamari Davis. I'm a business rep for IBEW Local 11 Electricians Union here in Los Angeles County, representing about 12,000 workers. And it's really important that we talk about our brothers and sisters in the industry. We're not cavalier about environment or clean environment, but we are very strongly care about jobs and about working people in this community. Extremely important to us. I mean, the oil and gas industry has been around for 100 years. We have the highest standards here in L.A. City. This isn't coal in West Virginia, this is L.A. So we care about our people that work there, too. So I really urge you to really consider and look at this report and this 2,500 setback. Is it proper? Because there are tens of thousands of families that are going to be affected if we just do that arbitrarily. I'm all for looking at the record, too, but let's be smart about it and not just put it back because someone says it's a good idea. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nia Lee Kobo, and I just want to thank you guys for your work before I begin. So I want to share my story with you guys. I grew up next to an oil well called Alanco Energy that was exposing toxic emissions that made not only me, but the rest of my community sick. So from nosebleeds to body spasms to asthma, I've gone through it all. And I believe no other Angelino should have to go through that, which is why I'm asking you guys to support the 2,500-foot Health and Safety Buffer Zone for our health, our safety, and our environment. I asked the Petroleum Administrator to release the report. It is your job to protect us, so I'm asking you guys to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Beatriz, a junior at Port of Los Angeles High School and a Youth for Environmental Justice member with Communities for a Better Environment. I support the 2,500-foot buffer. I've lived in Wilmington all my life. A few years ago, I lived 400 feet from a Warren EMP, EMP, Warren EMP oil drilling site. On my way to and from school back home, I'd pass by oil drilling sites. My neighbors have headaches, asthma. My own sister deals with low heart palpitation. It is very difficult for her to be in hot and cold weather conditions. In 2012, 1,200 gallons of crude oil spilled on my street. No emergency evacuations, no state of emergency. Not even one representative from Buscaino's office came by to stand for us. Just some breakfast burritos and gas gift cards for our inconvenience. It has taken me to take the stand for my community. I still live in Wilmington, near the biggest refinery in the West Coast, the Soto Train Tracks, and that constantly bring crude oil by rail. In my experience, like others, anywhere you move in Wilmington, you cannot escape big oils from refinery and train tracks and big, and oil drilling sites. This is mainly to Buscaino, and this is mainly to Buscaino, but it's obvious that he is not here. This is why we need a 2,500 setback between homes, churches, schools, and oil drilling sites. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Reverend Oliver Bowie.
Good morning, Councilman Corretson, all of the fellow council persons. This morning, first of all, I would like for everyone here from Stand L.A. at this time, would please stand and raise the right hand. To recap, we want to ask each and every council person today to sign the pledge to stand with us on the impacted community residents who came to speak today, to stand with 40 neighborhood councils, to stand with 70 organizations across the city to pass a 2,500 Human Health and Safety Buffer Zone Ordinance around all drilling sites. You can sign the pledge right now, and we would also like to invite each and every council person today to come outside on the south lawn where we will be rallying and come and support us. Thank you so much for your support. God bless you.
Thank you. Next speakers will be Lydia Ponce, Gus Torres, Paula Khan, and Gina Burnett.
Good morning. My name is Gus Torres. I'm here on behalf of UA Local 250 and thousands of working men and women in Los Angeles. The oil and gas industry is highly regulated and enforced by strong emissions and environmental regulations. These regulations are designed to protect public health and safety for people living, living and working near production facilities. If the city wishes to pass more codes and regulations, I encourage our leaders to remember the families that depend on the industry for their livelihood. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gina Burnett, and I'm here on behalf of Creed L.A. Unlike other oil-producing countries where workers don't have the same rights and job conditions are dangerous, jobs in the oil and gas industry in California are reliable and safe. Why would we want to stop the industry here and fund the industry in other countries where there are human rights issues and poor environment, environmental oversight? We share concerns about our local air quality, but other factors need to be considered as well, like freeway proximity and other production and manufacturing facilities. Any changes to the current codes will disrupt the local economy without improving public health since there are many other factors at fault. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paola, and I came to speak to you all. So please, I ask you to listen to me while I speak to you. So, all right, so we have 12 years to prevent global climate catastrophe. I've been working with asylum-seeking populations in Tijuana who are fleeing Central America because climate change has already began to impact them. The apocalypse has already reached people around the world, and it's causing a global climate refugee, refugee climate crisis. We need to stop oil drilling, whether it's urban and whether it's in rural parts of the world. We're already seeing global climate catastrophe, and it's up to us to ensure that our local communities are safe from the toxicity of oil drilling. Our people, people in our city are becoming sick at disproportionate rates in communities of color, in low-income communities, because we have not taken action to stop oil drilling. You all have the power to commit to a Green New Deal, and I want to see change in the city I live in. So I hope you commit to it with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So before we take the next speaker, so Mr. Herman, you were warned, and throughout the comments, you were moving around and obviously attempting to distract us and not paying attention to the speaker. It's disrupting the meeting. I suggest, Mr. President, that we ask Mr. Herman to leave quietly.
We will ask that, Mr. Herman, if you would please leave after several disruptions of this meeting.
Okay, and now, and now you're disrupting, now you're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Herman. Mr. President, I suggest we eject Mr. Herman right now and order him to leave.
If we could ask our security officers to have him removed.
Mr. Herman, you've been ordered removed. Leave. And you're disrupting the meeting?
And continuing to disrupt the meeting.
And Mr. Herman is shouting. He's been ordered to leave quietly, but he's shouting all the way out, keeping us from being able to engage in our meeting. Still shouting, you know, hate speech as he leaves. And just for the record, I'd like to make clear, we weren't objecting to Mr. Herman clapping when other people were. We were objecting when he was constantly moving around and attempting to distract us while somebody else was at the podium. Sorry about that.
Next speakers will be Nikki Minor, Wayne Williams, Rob Quan, and Lydia Ponce.
Hi, thank you for this. Thank you for this excellent vote in support of the opposition to SB 50. I represent the Bel Air Beverly Cross Neighborhood Council. We represent thousands of people in the Santa Monica Mountains. And I also speak for residents in Westwood, Rancho Park, Valley Village, and Los Feliz. Where any, any further issuance or remake of this SB 50 attempted coup from Sacramento will be repudiated, as is this one and as was the prior bid to overtake California in the form of SB 827. We, the people, will never accede to a state override of local control. If the state really wants to help with affordable housing and a way of living, build railroads from the outlying areas, the outlying counties, to connect with the subway, with the metro line here, that would be an easy solution if the state really wants to put forth their help to do something about the, about the housing situation instead of crowding everything into job-centric areas like UCLA. That makes no sense. That's it. Do it.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. I'm not sure if Wayne Williams, Rob Quan, or Lydia Ponce are here. I believe that none of them are. Next speakers will be Debbie Gagan, Godfrey Wachira, and Barry Clark.
Good afternoon. My name is Godfrey Wachira. As the council looks into oil production regulations, I hope you're going to do all you can to protect and keep the middle-class jobs in the city. I remember when the economy shifted from industrial to service-based, there were promises of jobs of tomorrow to replace the manufacturing jobs. Yet today, we know that those jobs of tomorrow only resulted in increased economic and income inequalities. Let's not, I hope we don't repeat the same mistake. The oil industry does provide job, middle-class jobs that are worth saving. There's been a lot said about housing and housing affordability crisis. And really, at this point, we really don't want to lose jobs that make, that enable people to afford housing in the first place. Housing can be solved through supply and demand, and demand can be reduced by higher-paying jobs. So let's keep the good jobs in L.A. and protect both health and jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernando Bravo, Debbie Gagan, Barry Clark.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to acknowledge everybody's presence. My name is Fernando Bravo. I'm a registered nurse. And I leave 12052 Turtle Springs Lane, Fort Orange, California. The reason why I mention that, because I'm, I'm five minutes away from the largest, you know, storage, the second-largest storage gas facility in the United States. And it's owned by California Gas. And also, this, this, the worst single natural gas leak that occurred in the United States. My organization, California Nurse Association and Nurses United, are supporting the 2,500-foot Human Health and Safety Buffer. And, and that's what I'm here for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't believe Debbie Gagan or Barry Clark are here.
I'm Barry Clark.
If you're Barry, okay, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Barry Clark, and my wife and I resided, resided in Hollywood for over 25 years. As this council is well aware, our city and state is in a significant and worsening housing crisis for all working... housing crisis for all working-class citizens. I apologize for the length of my presentation in advance. An extreme amount of newly-forced residential evictions by owners of residential properties are taking place in our city and state. These evictions are due to the desire of the property owners, and exacerbating that is they're, are now renting their units to commercial rental companies such as Airbnb. This practice has reduced the quality of living for our good neighbors and citizens and causing many of them to be at great risk of their reduction in quality of life. In light of the recent implementation of this Y City Council's rules on Airbnb, it we would like to seriously consider further and fully regulating this most dangerous subject trend in the ongoing housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Not sure how many of the rest are here, but I'll try it again. Robbie Davis, Harvey Eider, Maureen Levinson, Bill Watkins, and Arnold Sacks. Any of you here?
Bill Watkins is on.
If you're here, why don't you all come up and line up? And please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Harvey Eider. I'm speaking for myself and for the Public Solar Power Coalition. There are many things I'd like to say to you folks. In the 16 plan for the Air District, we submitted a solar new deal, and I want to incorporate that into reference here in the proceedings that were talked about and on the agenda and not. In reference to housing, the city, there are two types of Section 8. There's renters and to buy. There's a program to buy that's been lost since 2000, 2001. This is being, has been stopped by the city. In other words, they only had 33 units that were, went for like $500,000, $300,000 or up to $5,000,000. Okay, so, also, low-income housing tax credits in legislation should be reestablished so it can be go directly to low and middle-income people for solar equity, and I'd like to talk to you in other times about solar and equity and work that we've done with the city in the past over the 40 years or so.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, Bill Watkins. Thank you. Good morning. Running for CD 14 to 2020, so looking forward to doing that. I won't be wearing a suit and I won't take $200,000. I will reduce my salary as my first act if I become a councilman in District 14. Hello, Gil. We've got a lot of problems. I'd like to hand to the city attorney for it's a tough job and doing your best. Thank you. I've been really frustrated and I know, some know, I've seen my emails, how much it hurts me when our women are abused, especially our female council members. It just, I don't know what about my past, it just, it triggers me into really being upset. It's a hard thing to deal with and we just got to keep working on it. Also, let's not give up on that row over here. Let's reach out and see what we can do for the people out here. There's some things we can do, and Bob Bloomingfield has introduced a street cleaning program for pedestrians, and we need to push that through and offer jobs to people who are having a hard time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, there is a request that the item reconsidered from Friday be sent forth with today.
Without objection, that will be ordered.
No other cards?
So, general public comment is closed.
Mr. President?
Mr. Spindler is shouting out from the audience. If he does that again, we'll ask that he be removed.
And, Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Are there any announcements? Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Much, Mr. Chair. I want to call to, call everyone's attention to our good friend and our communications director, Ashley Thomas, who began serving with us at the time we started here on the LA City Council, and has been a lifelong activist before that, working at LANE and other organizations, even studying social justice at Berkeley and the Claremont Colleges. She helped us build our office and build our movement and made sure that District 8 was a change agent and that District 8 struggled against the status quo, and that we put out, one, a message of hope, but also a message that we're going to continue the fight for social and economic justice here. And so, she has made the decision to depart our office in a formal sense, but she's always a part of the CD 8 family and always a part of the movement for social and economic justice. And so, I want to thank her for her service and congratulate her on her next step in her career. Thank you so much.
Any other announcements? If not, if we could rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Smith, I believe you have one? No? Looking on my right, don't see any. Looking on my left. Mr. Harris-Dawson, I believe you have one?
I do. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members. This has been a really, really heavy week for us here in the city of Los Angeles, losing so many giants. Today, I asked, and joined with councilmembers Bloomingfield and Bonin, and asked that we adjourn in the memory of one Gary Stewart. Gary Stewart is one of our most prolific activists in this city, born and raised in the city of LA, a graduate of Venice High School. In his formal, in his day job, Gary Stewart was a record executive and a fan of the music industry and entered the music industry at a very early age. I like to say, even though that this is not documented, this is Marquise making it up, making this up, that Gary Stewart is the person that really popularized the mixtape. So, he, at Rhino Records, any of you who bought a, you know, Best of the Seventies or Best of the Hair Bands or Best of LA Punk Rock Music albums, it was Gary Stewart that conceived and compiled those record collections and box sets. And he left a mark on the music industry and was able to transition into the new iteration of the music industry, going from Rhino Records, where you sold records and tapes and CDs physically, to becoming an executive at iTunes when that came, when that came about. Gary Stewart was very active with the LANE, with the Community Coalition, and extremely active with the Liberty Hill Foundation, as well as a host of other causes. He was very famous, one, for being a supporter, but also being a person who helped people understand their, the cultural aspects of their lives. And so, he was famous for having a trunk, the trunk of his Prius, and so he'd come to you and he would say, "What was your first concert?" Or, "What song did you first fall in love to?" Or, "What was your favorite record?" And if you told him, he would walk you, often walk you to his, the trunk of his car, and he'd pull out the album, you know, pull out a piece of vinyl and gift it to you. At the Community Coalition, we were very moved by the series, The Wire, and we really wanted people that work with us to avail themselves of that. And so, Gary Stewart made his business to make sure every employee of the Community Coalition had the full box set of The Wire series. So they had no excuse not to watch it. And so, we lost him at the age of 62, and the activist world continues to mourn with several ceremonies happening throughout this week.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson, for starting the adjournment for Gary, which Bob is joining us in as well. Gary was a really, really special and quirky guy. He was unusual. He projected as socially awkward, but he was a relentlessly aggressively social guy. He was one of those people that you saw absolutely everywhere. I'd known him for about 10 years, I guess, and I first got to know him through my husband, Sean, who had mutual friends, and we'd go to these events and Sean would often say, at least on three occasions, would say, "Gary, everybody says we have to meet. Everybody says that I've got to know Gary Stewart." And Gary would look at Sean with a blank stare and then turn away, and it would be the end of the conversation. And that happened repeatedly until there was a conversation about music, and then, boom. He brought Sean out to his car, to the trunk, and Gary was very, very understated, but when he took you to his trunk, or when he was talking about music, it was with an evangelical fervor. It was an absolute passion. I first got to really work with Gary on the advisory board of LANE about eight or 10 years ago, and that's where we sort of bonded both over music and over politics. And he discovered that I was a fan of a musician that most people don't know of. Some folks in lefty circles know of him, Billy Bragg, who is a folk punk rock socialist musician from Great Britain. And we really bonded over Billy Bragg. He introduced me to Billy Bragg right after I got elected, got Billy to grant permission to have some of his songs performed at my swearing-in, and then helped me arrange a presentation of Billy at his last show at the Troubadour in February, which was the last time I saw Gary. He was never more happy than when he was engaged in music or politics, and like a Billy Bragg show was the complete intersection of that. And he was just absolutely in his glory on that. I am one of his Wire converties. I had been told by people for like a decade, "You have to watch the show, you have to watch the show," and so was a contrarian, I refused to watch it. And Gary's the one who finally broke my will and got me to watch it by taking me to his trunk and giving me a box set collection. He was a really, really special guy. He not only did the big things, like LANE and Liberty Hill and Community Coalition, and was really there for them in big ways, he also did the small stuff. He was the guy I would run into at the Joint Democratic Headquarters. Almost any night, I would walk into that headquarters, he'd be sitting there quietly making phone calls and coaching newcomers in how to make phone calls effectively. He gave a lot of his, of his time and of his heart and of his wallet, and he did so freely and joyfully. And when, when he died, when I got the news of his passing early Friday morning, I was on the way into work, I just sort of broke down. I was just weeping in the car. And the thing that I could, the thing that I kept thinking of is the lyric from American Pie, "The Day the Music Died," because that's kind of what it felt like. Sadly, as has been reported in the press, Gary took his own life, and that has, I think, really hit a lot of us really, really hard, because he was loved by so, so many. And I think we're all struggling to figure out how we were unable to get that, that love into his heart and let him know how loved and appreciated he was. And it's just a maddening illustration of how powerful depression is and how it's so hard to know when someone's suffering. And Billy Bragg actually tweeted out about Gary the other day and did a message on his Facebook, and the outpouring of love from people in politics, from the music industry, just absolutely overwhelming. And I hope he had some appreciation of how much he touched people in so many various ways.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. Now, I just wanted to add my voice. You guys have said it very well, and I have that box set of The Wire from Gary, and I remember the first time I met him, maybe 15-plus years ago, my wife was the CEO of Liberty Hill, and he was on the board and a very active board member, and we got into a conversation about, I think it was the Sex Pistols or it was the Clash, and I'm a big Clash fan, and we bonded, and he took me out to his car and opened it up, and the first time I saw that, I was like, "Did this guy just get this stuff off the truck?" Why does he have, this seemingly normal guy have a whole trunk full of stuff, and he seems to know where everything is? But his enthusiasm for, for music and for social justice is just unparalleled, and as you aptly stated, the two integrate very well together, and he was certainly very much aware of the integration, and he will be missed in so many ways. And as you said, every time I saw him, he was friendly and happy, and it just, it just breaks your heart to realize that, that he was suffering, obviously so much. And it's a painful day to lose someone who's done so much for so many in this way. So may he rest in peace.
Anyone else on the left? Mr. Sadio?
Are we on a separate matter?
Yes.
So, the loss of Gary is tragic because of the state of the depression, the suicide, and the suddenness. And so, it's tragic in the sense that all of us who knew him, somehow we came up short in letting him know how much he was appreciated. On the other hand, I want to also close in the memory, which is appropriate, because they were fellow travelers in many ways. Blasphemy Payne passed away last week. I didn't want to mix that in with "You're Great" closing last Friday. But Blasphemy Payne is a stalwart of the progressive community, of the faith-based community, of the anti-war movement, a giant in, in the progressive movement. I didn't realize that he had played football at USC, which accounted for his size, so he was not just big in stature, but also in size. Him and his wife at every march and rally and meeting, and much like Gary, trying to do all that they could to make the Democratic Party a party and function and work and be a voice for the people. He left the clergy as a priest in a, you know, much-publicized departure when he spoke out against our presence in Guatemala. He also was noteworthy in a big brawl he had with some of the early hate television in the 80s, but just like Gary, ever-present. And, you know, he passed last week, but he lived a very rich and full life, one in which he shared his love as a priest. He would say, people would say, "Well, you used to be a priest," and he would say, "No, no, I am a priest." And so, he was a force of God and a force of goodwill, and just ever-present, and God bless him and his family and Teresa, for 89 great years of a commitment to social justice and a great life well-lived.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. And I'd also like to adjourn in memory of someone who was a giant in her own way, Virginia Uribe. Virginia was a science teacher and a college counselor at Fairfax High School for 42 years, but she was best known for her work relating to the issues faced by LGBT youth in the schools, and it just, which began when she was doing research for her PhD in psychology. In 1984, an openly gay student dropped out of the school after being constantly harassed. It turned out that he had been kicked out of his home at age 14 after coming out as gay to his parents, and that Fairfax High School was the fourth high school he had quit because of extensive anti-gay harassment. That led to Virginia founding Project 10, the name which came from the Kinsey sex research theory that 10% of the population is gay. It was the nation's first LGBT dropout prevention and support program for LGBT students. And I was part of city government in West Hollywood then, a city which was also founded at the same time in 1984, with a large LGBT population and city council majority, so we were all very supportive and actively supportive, especially in the early years when Project 10 was considered a bit controversial. Its nonprofit arm, Friends of Project 10, was founded in 1986 and served as a launching pad for gay straight alliances and the Gay Lesbian Straight Education Network, and many other school-based support programs throughout the country. Virginia received recognition for her work from numerous organizations, including the National Education Association, Lambda Legal, Gay Alliance Against Defamation, the California State Assembly and State Assembly and Senate, the Mayor's Office in Los Angeles, L.A. County Human Relations Commission, the City of West Hollywood, L.A. LGBT Center, and the Gay Lesbian Straight Education Network. Her proudest moment was when she was designated as a finalist for President Obama's Presidential Medal of Freedom Award. She's survived by her spouse, Gail Rolf, her sister, Diana Engler, her daughter, Catherine Uribe, her son, Mark Uribe, her grandson, Richard Nichols, her great-granddaughter, Sari Garcia, and cousins and nephews. And donations to honor her memory can be sent to Friends of Project 10 at 115 West California Boulevard, Suite 116, Pasadena, 91105, or online at project10.org. And all proceeds will go to their Models of Excellence Friendship Scholarship Program. And a celebration of her life will be held at the Friendship Auditorium, 3201 Riverside Drive, on June 1st from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. And may she rest in peace. And if nothing else is before us, we are adjourned.